I call this regular meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, February 4th of 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. Ms. Trevino, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Saul Gonzalez.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mayor Heaton.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
And Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Our invocation tonight is being provided by Derek Ben, who is pastor of the Greater Bethel Baptist Church, a church who has been in our community for a really long time.
Yes, ma'am. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for today's allotment of grace and mercy, for allowing us to come together, for giving us another day, and for these minutes and the privilege that it is to come together for the betterment of our city. We thank you for those who have been elected and are serving now. Bless our mayor, bless our council, bless our community. We ask that the agenda, the issues that will be discussed, the issues that need to be resolved be addressed in a way that would honor the "Love your neighbor as yourself" mandate. We pray to the issues that are resolved in a way that would make San Marcos better because of the time spent tonight. Bless all of those who call San Marcos home. Bless the city, bless the community, bless the campus, bless the churches. Continue to let this be a model that the country can look at and what a city could look like when we come together from different backgrounds, from varied places, but have a common interest, and that's to make a city better. We know as a city and as a country, we have some difficult days ahead, but we have put our trust in you and will continue to do that for as long as you allow us to breathe. As others have asked and said, "God bless America," we certainly ask that you would bless our country, but we ask tonight that you would bless our city. Bless the place that we call home, bless San Marcos. We ask that you would unify us in a way that others would model. Let tonight be done in such a way that would honor your will. Bless all that love the place that you've given us called San Marcos. These things we pray, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. Next is our pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with justice, liberty, and justice for all.
I'm mixing that up with the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Yes. Next is our citizen comment time period. The council welcomes comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. Those wishing to speak must sign up. There is a process for that. Speakers may speak once during citizen comment time period, may not yield time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing topic on tonight's agenda, I ask that you not repeat exactly the same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You have three minutes to speak. When you state your name, a timer is displayed on the screen, will be displayed on the screen. You'll start in the green. When the timer shows only yellow, you'll have less than 20 seconds. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. Mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. If you do any of those, you will hear the gavel. I will ask you to leave the council chambers. If you need help doing so, our officer will assist you. This is your warning. Our first and only speaker is Zakaria Alnatur. I'm sure I mispronounced that, my apologies.
He's not here.
Not here? In the lobby?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Well, in that case, we will move on to our consent agenda. The following ordinances, resolutions, and other items may be acted upon by one motion. No separate discussion or action is necessary unless desired by a council member, in which event they will pull that item and it will be considered after our public hearings. Counsel, anything to pull?
Yes, ma'am.
Which item?
Item six.
All right, we have an item six is pulled. Any others? Item two. Two by Ms. Garza, six by... Anyone else? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve items one, three, four, five, seven, and eight.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mendoza, seconded by... I'll second it. To approve the consent agenda. And we're voting with buttons. Is yours not picking up?
The motion passes seven to zero.
Oh, it finally took. All right. Then we will go on to our public hearing and we will come back to those two. So Ms. Trevino, if you would read item nine.
Receive a staff presentation. Hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2025-02, amending the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ-24-11 by rezoning approximately 3.7 acres of land in Hayes County, Texas, comprising lots six through 12 in W N Go Fourth for suburban addition and an unplanted 1.65 acre tract of land in the J M Feramendi survey, generally located on the western side of Post Road, approximately 600 feet northeast of the intersection between Post Road and Limekiln Road from single-family six to character District four or subject to consent of the owner and thus intended zoning district classification, including procedural provisions and declare an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance 2025-02 on the first of two readings.
Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This approximately 3.7 acre property is located along Post Road between Spring Road and Limekiln Road. Next slide. The property is partially vacant with some single-family rental structures and the old Bismarck Filling Station, which is eligible for demolition. It's surrounded by open space and other residential uses. Next slide. The property is currently zoned, single-family SF6, and the applicant is proposing character District four, CD4 zoning district. Next slide. The first step in our analysis of a zoning change is to look at the comprehensive plan. This is our newly adopted comprehensive plan, and the subject property is designated as mixed-use low, which is a place type for small-scale mixed-use developments. Next slide. On the zoning district comprehensive plan translation table, 4.1 in the development code, CD4, is a district that should be considered in mixed-use low. Next slide. The CD4 zoning district allows a variety of residential uses and some limited commercial uses. The applicant is proposing to construct a townhome or small multifamily development. Next slide. The property is located within the Edwards-Aquifer recharge and transition zones and includes some floodplain. There was a question on the message board about the coloring of this map, and where the 100-year floodplain, the light blue, overlaps the transition zone, the resulting color is a bit of a green color. And where the floodplain overlaps the recharge zone, the resulting color is that grayish-blue. Next slide. The development will be required to follow all of the development code requirements for infrastructure, and San Marcos is the utility provider for these properties. Next slide. The Planning and Zoning Commission discussed their concern with floodplain and increased impervious cover, and a neighbor spoke in reference to flooding concerns. However, the applicant indicated that their property is downstream from the residences on Spring Road. The commission pointed out that any uses allowed in CD4 could be developed on this property in the future, and Table 4.1 takes that into consideration and considers the allowable uses, indicating that this district should be considered in this area. And finally, the commission inquired whether any gas tanks were existing from the Bismarck Filling Station, and the applicant indicated the station was too old to have underground tanks. Following discussion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, and staff recommends approval. That concludes my presentation.
All right. I will open the public hearing and ask if anybody wishes to speak during the public hearing. Now is the time to approach the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Shelton Eubanks. I live at 136 Iron Horse in New Ruffles, Texas. My wife and I are the owners of this property. We've purchased... I lived on the property for about 10 years, and we purchased the land around it with the intent that at some point we could clean up that area and build something really nice over there. So what we have today is we'd like to build some townhomes over there. So we've come to you for a CD, for consideration, for a CD4 zone to allow us to do that. Appreciate your, you know, listening to us and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing far against or about this project? If not, I will close the public hearing, and I await a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay. I've got a motion by Mr. Mendoza, seconded by Mr. Scott. Counsel, discussion. I'll buy y'all some time. I, too, was concerned about the environmental. I watched the planning and zoning meeting on this topic. I was glad to hear that this is downstream, although, as we all know, sometimes water gets caught and backs up. Just want to acknowledge that. Could you go through just a little bit of the protections that will be afforded?
Yes, absolutely. As the property goes through the plating process, they will have to complete a watershed protection plan, and that's the time when the developers' engineers work with city engineers to determine what type of retention ponds, detention ponds are required, and any other type of stormwater flow management that needs to occur on the property. From the Planning and Zoning Commission discussion, you may have seen or recall that they have actually set aside quite a bit of the back of the property that's in the floodplain, when you look at that map, for that detention and retention. So our engineers will work with them to make sure that they have enough capacity to accommodate the additional impervious cover that they would be placing on the property.
Thank you. Thought we should review that again. Here, Mr. Mendoza.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could ask, I don't know if it's with you, Amanda, if it's the owner of the property, but I was going to ask, what's being done? Is there any preservation being done? Are you going to do anything with the old structure that was still left? I know there was only probably a pillar or two still left from the original gas station.
There's a lot of that building still there, but one of the pillars is...
Yeah, kind of tilting over.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I've been working with Allison Brake, and I can't think of what her name is, at the Historical Commission, and we're trying to figure out what to do with it. There was a... We went... I applied for a demo permit. That way, we could get the process started. That's been approved, but I don't have any intention of tearing that thing down anytime soon. We're trying to figure out how to save the front, the facade of it, as well as the columns. The structure itself is really dilapidated. It's falling down. I can't save it, but I would... We're definitely looking at ways that we can save the front and the columns, maybe put them in a different place in San Marcos with a little plaque or something. But I also wanted to name it the Bismarck, the townhomes, so in honor of that. So I don't have a good answer for you yet, but we are going to keep at least the front facade as well as the columns.
Thank you. We lose a lot of structures, just even the smallest bit. There's still a lot of things... I appreciate you just preserving that bit of history if it's a really, used to be really cool station.
It was, yeah. On the underground tanks, I've looked at TCQ's website. There's no... There were no underground tanks back then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Saul Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a... Well, there used to be a pond in back of this property here. Is that pond still there? Is it spring-fed? And the reason I'm asking, I just want to see where the water's going to go, if it's going to go to that pond or not.
And you can actually see the pond in the aerial map that's in the packet. It's not on this property. It's on the property behind. I can let the applicant speak to whether or not it's spring-fed, but as I understand the topography, that's actually uphill, and the drainage would come down. So I can let the applicant continue to speak to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, if the Post Road runs... It falls from the north to the south. So the water drains back towards the stadium, and then it drains off into that big ranch. I think it's the DuPont Ranch back there. The water naturally goes all that way anyway. So with our engineers, my engineers were looking at it. That was where the water was going to continue to go. As far as there's a big detention pond, when Post Road was rebuilt, they drained everything north of Spring Road under it and then into a retention pond back there. There was another small pond back there, but that is the headwaters for the San Marcos back there. The water would likely not go into the pond. It would likely go further down.
Going toward the DuPont property?
Yes, sir. All the water, Post Road, it not only goes north to south, it also goes east to west in the slopes. So that water naturally drains down, back onto that big ranch back there.
I don't know if you've ever been back there, but it's a sight to see. It looks really prehistoric. Everything looks natural.
Yeah, it's a good 100-acre ranch back there.
Yeah. That's all I had, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for...
Anyone else? If not, then, did you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Trevino, I think we're ready to vote.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. We will go back to item two.
Consider approval of Resolution 2025-14R, approving a change in service to the contract with Bakerstaff Heath Delgado Acosta, LOP, providing for state legislative consulting services to extend the contract term for one year with the possibility of two additional one-year renewals in the estimated amount of $30,000 authorized city manager her designate to execute all documents necessary to implement said change in service and any renewals on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Looking for a motion? Mr. Scott has made a motion to approve. Mr. Mendoza has provided the second. Ms. Garza.
Thank you. I just think it's important to bring this up so that those who are not following our legislative committee agenda can know the conversation that was out about, around this. We've talked about this firm in the past, and so just letting our... My constituents know that we're getting like the best bang for our buck, particularly since we are in... Walking into a legislative session and... Yeah, so I don't know. I'm looking at you, Lauren, because I feel like it's falling on you. Sorry.
Lauren Surley, Director of Communications and Intergovernmental Relations. Just to address that, we are planned to schedule to go out for a request for purchase this coming year to assess that and make sure that we are receiving all of the different things that you, that our legislative committee wants. Was there more that you need?
No. I mean, basically, we're moving forward with this person and for this year.
Correct.
And assessing for the future.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
That's all I want.
Yes, ma'am. How long have we used this firm?
I believe her contract began in 2018.
Okay. Have there been any significant wins that they've...
I would have to go back and look at all of my notes for that. She has helped us delegate and go up there and provide some testimony and different things like that for certain things. Mermaid Capital, she was a big part of as well.
Okay. So all of the stuff that we agreed on for like legislative priorities, they're going to be the ones to deliver that?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I will tell you, and this was a little before Ms. Surley's time, but I know that when we went through a lot of discussion about the sales tax and sourcing of sales tax, that was something where it was really critical. We all went up and provided testimony, and this firm helped us with being able to do that and be able to make sure that we were keeping track of what was happening with legislation when there were committee hearings and things like that that did provide us opportunities. So that has been helpful for us in the past. But as Ms. Lauren Surley mentioned, is that we just need to make sure that we are looking at ensuring that the dollars go to really help us monitor things that are affecting San Marcos legislatively as best as possible. So that's our goal with going out to the market, to be sure that we're getting the best.
Absolutely.
And do we know if we're the sole client?
No.
We are not the sole client.
Okay. Do we know how many in addition that she's managing?
I do not. I'd have to ask her.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we have a pretty good legislative agenda, and I'm just hoping that we take super serious the attacks on local power. I think there was a lot left to be desired, at least on my end. But I also recognize that I'm not super familiar with like the way that other firms handled that, like across the state. But I do think for the viewers at home, we... I think we made it pretty clear what we want this year. And yeah, I think it's a good step for the following year to go back and revisit that, just to make sure.
Anyone else? Ms. Trevino will vote.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, on to item six.
Consider approval of Resolution 2025-18R, approving an amendment to the contract with Flock Group, Inc., for additional equipment and software for the police department's license plate recognition technology in the amount of $124,068.49 for the first year, with the option to renew for three one-year extensions authorized city manager or her designate to execute the contract amendment on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
We need to have a motion to approve or deny, and then have... We can start the discussion, and at that point, I'll accept a motion to postpone. But we need to get it on the table first. Can you say that louder and into your microphone?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion to approve by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Now we've got it on the table. I need to go to Ms. Rodriguez first because she...
That was my motion, motion to postpone.
Okay. I'll let you make that motion. Is that all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Until...
I know we talked at the visioning about the optimization and reviewing, you know, our policies as it relates to a variety of technology, but in particular, this security. And so I don't know when that conversation is set to happen. But if that's not set to happen into the future, I guess contingent on... Until we can address that.
So is it the direction that we not bring this back until we have a policy in place? Just to make sure we're clear that there's a policy in place that governs how the technology is used?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have that?
We do.
We do, but there are significant areas of which I know when we were talking about optimization and dealing with civil rights that I would like to address, and so...
Good evening, Stans.
Did we get a second?
Uh-huh.
Okay, I didn't hear.
Yes. Mr. Scott made the motion, and Ms. Lorenzo Gonzalez seconded it.
But on the postponement, I mean...
Oh, no, not yet. Mr. Scott will say, "Thank you."
Okay.
Actually, what I was pausing for when we were trying to determine what her motion fully was, to find out when we're postponing it, too, to finish out that motion and make that determination.
And do we want Chief Standridge to provide clarity on what policy we currently have?
I mean, I've reviewed it, so...
It's just going further in the language that we talked about during visioning.
But for the rest of us, and then I'm going to come back and ask again, we try to do either a date certain or when some trigger, you know, when something has happened. But can we let Mr. Chief Standridge address this? Thank you.
Good evening, Stan Standridge, Police Chief. So the policy was originally promulgated and issued June 24th of 2022, and then it was revised July 29th of 2024. This policy's been in effect. So it's been published on our website. So it's been publicly consumed by whomever can access these. It is a four-page document. It is reflective of the accredited standard, specifically the Texas Best Practice 7.36. So it reflects what departments all across Texas are currently doing. It has all of the elements of the best practice, and there are hundreds of agencies that are accredited. And so I'm not sure how we're going to optimize a policy that already meets accreditation standards. So my only response would be, plus, we already have operational cameras. So license plate reader technology is currently underway and has been underway for several years. We're just simply adding additional cameras. I welcome the eventual conversation about optimizing technology. I think that conversation... I mean, Chief Anderson and I talked about this. We would welcome that, but I would respectfully request that this continue because the cameras are already in process of being installed.
The first round of cameras?
Say again?
I'm sorry, the first? The first cameras that were purchased, or I'm confused?
The first batch of cameras were originally done as early as, I want to say, 2022. There have been three total batches. So the initial batch of cameras that council authorized have been operationalized for a couple of years now. Then we received grant funding. If you all recall, we received two grants in 2024, which provided the additional 19 cameras in total. So if council approves this, we will have 33 operational cameras.
But the 14 that are currently under discussion are not approved? They're not getting put up? At least I would hope, because they're contingent on our approval. Have we purchased them?
There... Yes, the cameras have already been purchased. From my understanding, there are 19, not 14. The 14 was the original batch. There are 19 that's before you. Because this now exceeded the $100,000 threshold, that's why purchasing brought this forward to council. Now, I have my flock representative here. I could have misspoken. I could have misspoken. Uh we have Kevin Cutler here, we also have Kristen online, they can confirm or deny whether or not the cameras have actually been purchased.
So this was, we thought it was gonna be a hun- under a hundred, initiated the purchasing process, and then it ended up being over the hundred?
Yes, essentially.
And, and for my colleagues, I've, I've read the policy that you're talking about. Um they may be the best standards in Texas, but they're not the best standards nationwide. Um there are, have been plenty of things addressed as far as data usage, data retention, data sharing. And so that's what I'm asking, that we actually sit and revisit. Specifically, that thirty-day storage, that's actually considered the bottom tier. That's not statutorily, that's actually from Flock. There are other states and other cities who have actually readdressed that thirty-day window to say, do we need that many if, if the person's not necessarily on a list worthy of our concern? And so that's what I'm saying. I'm not objecting that there are potential good uses for these cameras. What I'm saying is that until we actually address those things, then we can bring it back. That's already been something that my colleagues and I have agreed upon, that we want to readdress, and so I'd rather do it then and not retroactively in the future after we've already purchased these things.
And, and I received that feedback. The only thing I would respond with is, thirty days is probably an industry standard used by Flock and fully supported by the San Marcos Police Department, because the thirty days gives citizens and detectives enough time, first of all, to become aware of the crime, the victim to come forward to report the crime, and then the detectives to be able to do the follow-up on the actual investigation. So I believe that thirty days is appropriate. Anything shorter than that, and we're gonna be deleting evidence for investigations that should have gone forward.
So Mayor, if I may chime in a little bit, because what we're posted for is the procurement of the cameras, and what I think what we need to narrow down is, is the council first interested in reviewing a policy? Cuz there's no decision on what the policy, policy should contain, but I'm assuming the request is that the council is the final determina- determining body on what should be in the policy. So you're wanting, I just wanna make sure, it's not staff revising and bringing it back, you're wanting the council to approve the policy as part of your postponement. I just wanna make sure I understand what the expectation is also for staff and, and who is responsible for what, I think.
Cuz the policy, as I understand it now, is under the Chi- the chief's purview as part of his S and P D policies. Now, what we heard from council at visioning is, is that you wanted to make sure we were, um that we had policies that explicitly state the protection of personal privacy. And so that's what we wanna make sure, is that the policy really speaks to that in terms of who has access. Some of the other questions are, um when it comes to us maybe working with another agency, then how is it provided to them, that kind of information, so that people have a better understanding of what can, how the information can be utilized um by other agencies outside of the city of San Marcos. So those are the things that we really wanna be able to touch upon, um and then those are the things that the chief would implement. So we can share, if we can revise the draft and look at, look at, not the draft, but the actual policy, and make some edits, and then share that with council so that y'all can look at it, but it is something that is under the chief, cuz it's part of his policies.
And that's, that's fine. I, it's just like what I talked to you and the mayor about. You know, the fact that there hasn't been significant um regulation when it comes to these industries in a very long time, even before I was born, it's left the cities to handle that. And so we are seeing nationally what's happening to data points um that weren't previously actually, you know, protected. And so I wanna make sure that we're doing our part in the case that somebody else isn't. That's all it is.
Right. And I, again, I just wanna make sure, I don't think tonight is the night to actually start debating, or even this, the contents of the policy is a question of council's interest in looking at that as a condition for postponement.
What, what I'm going to ask now is exactly what is that step? Do we wanna put this on agenda, point a council committee? We've got a criminal justice reform committee that has broadened out into kinda general criminal justice things, a committee that could look at this, uh or it could come back. Uh i- i- if you're wanting it to come back to council, I guess we can do that, but do you want a committee to sort of work and vet this in between?
What I would say to that, though, is that if council wants to create a different policy, but the chief's policies are under the chief's purview, they don't typically come for council approval. So that's what we need clarification on, because the things that are his.
I'm trying to get there.
Then, so we would need to create, that, that would just mean creating another policy that is council's policy versus it being the chief's policy.
Correct.
If it would come to council.
That's where I was going with that. Well, I'm looking to see how we want to do that, and did we want to take a committee that we already have that's been dealing with similar issues, uh and let them work through this with the chief, um and to see where we might want to go. I'm trying to figure out how long that will take. I'm still working on your motion to postpone and what the trigger is going to be to bring it back.
If the council committee that you're, you're referring to has the purview, that's fine with me.
Um I, I.
Let me ask the other members of the committee.
I think for the sake of this, I, I, I would appreciate the opportunity to co-create it, but perhaps instead of limiting it to the CJR committee, just because I think we have like more good perspectives on this.
The other option was to appoint a different committee, and I'm fine with that, too.
Can we just do it like on a work session or something?
We could do that, too.
Yeah, work session's fine.
Because then, it's like we can co-create it like as a group with you.
That's another option, and I'm happy, I'm fine, I'm fine with any of them.
And I think it gives the public an opportunity to come and speak, too.
Okay.
So to, to clarify, um to go to City Manager Race's point, um I'm the purveyor of policy because of my position. You all hired me to promulgate and uh enforce policy. The policy doesn't come from this body. And now you're talking about co-creating policies, so that's a remarkable departure from what we have, have always done, our paradigm.
Yes, it is.
For the city of San Marcos. So I'm seeking clarification. Are we now delegating my authority to this body to promulgate policy? That's, that's to her point.
And I'll, I wanna speak to that from the legal perspective real quick, cuz so.
Yes.
It's, it's kind of an interesting dynamic, cuz the chief is correct and Ms. Race is correct as well, that's in the chief's purview. Uh but at the end of the day, the council is providing funding for a procurement or not procurement, and it's uh, so it is partly within your realm to decide if, if it's a procurement that fits within uh standards that, you know, are suitable for the procurement. So yes, you're not, you really aren't stepping into his shoes, but at the same time, you're reviewing a pre- a procurement and whether you're gonna approve it or not under conditions that are satisfactory to you. So it's, it's, it's a two-way, it's really a two-way dialogue here, is what it's gonna end up being.
I would, I would prefer that, that we separate it. I'm, I'm good with looking at the policy, but like you say, this is a purchase tonight. Personally, I'm gonna vote against the postponement, but I would certainly say yes to the conversation and not taking a year to do this. Uh but I'd like to go ahead and see these cameras up and running, so I'll be against the postponement. I'm for the concept of what you're talking about. So just to get that. But I'm still trying to get her motion down, that she, your, your motion is to postpone until policy review by council?
Sounds good by me. Does that sound good with you?
Is that, will that work? Mr. Gary?
That, that would be fine. Um and I guess we don't have a date yet for that, but whenever it's scheduled.
Cuz our work sessions are full until April, I wanna say.
Okay. Or what we could do, what we've done sometimes, is we could say that by the first council meeting in June, presuming that all this will happen. If it happens sooner, then it comes back to us sooner.
That's fine.
So whichever way you wanna go with that.
Let's do that one.
The June? Okay. It'll be the June meeting, actually, since we only meet once in June. Okay, so that's your motion. Mr. Scott, does your second still hold?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Then with that motion to postpone, Ms. Trevino, let's vote on that.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes five to two.
Okay. So the item is postponed until we've had council review. We're gonna call it the first meeting in June. If we get something done and, and clarified and codified before that, then it would come back to us sooner. So that item is now postponed and no longer in play. So I believe we concluded our consent agenda, is that correct, Ms.
Yes.
Trevino, Mr. Gary. Okay. Thank you. And we have concluded our public hearing, so we are now on item N.
Consider the appointment of the mayor or a city council member to fill vacancies on the following council committees. A, Sedona Self-Development Agreement; B, Residential Occupancy Restrictions; C, Peanut Butter Development Agreement.
Okay, we'll do these uh one at a time. Currently on Sedona is Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Scott. So do we have any volunteers before somebody's voluntold? And, and the reason we're filling these is because I don't remember if it was Mr. Gleason or Ms. Prather that was on this, so it's a, it's a vacancy. So, now we can have a committee of two. So if anyone wants to be on it, now's the time to send a smoke signal or something?
I'm not in.
I am on one council committee, so I guess I'll do it.
Okay. So you are volunteering. Anyone else? It's one for one, Ms. Trevino, and we can vote.
Anyone easy for volunteering? The motion passes seven to zero.
All righty, that one is done. B, Residential Occupancy Restrictions. Currently, that's Ms. Garza and Mr. Mendoza. Looking for volunteers?
I'll, I'll be honest.
You would? Okay.
I was gonna nominate Mr. Gonzalez.
Which one?
Mr. Gonzalez, for the residential occupancy.
Which one, Mr. Gonzalez?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I apologize. Uh Mr. Saul Gonzalez.
All right.
All right.
Do you, would, do you want to be on this committee?
Yeah, we're looking for just all those two that are now, they're gonna remain, or whatever.
Well, we've already changed it to three.
Yeah, please, yeah, I like it.
Okay. So we've got two people who would like to be on this committee. So what we will do is we will.
You can, you can leave it for Saul. I know.
Oh, he's still gonna be?
Oh, it's, I think it's just one.
No, we need, no, we, we need one.
It's just one.
So we'll have to vote uh between the two of you.
Oh.
Well, they haven't confirmed me on it yet.
No, the people who are on are Ms. Garza and Mr. Mendoza. We're looking for one person.
Well, okay, I misunderstood. Yeah, I just.
So you want to be on it?
Yeah.
Ms. Rodriguez, do you still want to be on it?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, all right. So we are, and Mr. Gonzalez, and we are one for one, so we can just vote. I'm sorry.
There it goes.
Okay. Yeah, we can't vote till she turns the machine on.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. And now we have a development that has been codenamed uh Peanut Butter. Uh that is currently me and Mr. Mendoza. Looking for volunteers?
I, I was gonna again reach out to Mr. Gonzalez, Saul, about this. Um just this project is, is, he and I have manufacturing backgrounds, so I was wondering if he would be somebody who would be.
Manufacturing?
Uh, I'm sorry, um just backgrounds for just old school background.
Do you want to be on this one?
Well, can you tell me a little bit more about it?
It's a development agreement for a large, large proposed development.
They make cookies. No, just kidding.
And the peanut butter is no indication of what it is. I don't. It's not a peanut butter factory or anything.
It's a peanut butter factory.
If he's not interested, I mean, I'm wanting to do it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. So I mean, we, we've been asked not to divulge the details, so I'm not, I'm trying to. All right, so we've got, Mr. Gonzalez has been nominated. Anybody else?
Uh I, I was gonna say, if no one was interested, I'd volunteer, but I mean, if Mr. Gonzalez really wants it, he can have it.
All right. Then we have one for one. Let's vote.
Mr. Scott?
Mr. Scott, would you hit the button, please?
I did.
Hit it, gotta hit it again. Well, now here's the showing that it's pushed.
Mine was doing that earlier, too, yeah.
Yeah. His aren't blinking anymore, and one of his buttons is lit.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Press it again.
No.
I think it's like the cord in the back, you have to like.
You wanna, yeah, can he just say the vote, because we've already put ours in?
Motion.
Mr. Gonzalez, uh Mr. Scott, you were, aye?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
All right. All right, and while we're appointing people and things, we're on to item eleven. Ms. Trevino.
Discuss failing vacancy to position two and consider appointments or reappointments to positions three, five, and six of the tax increment reinvestment zone, Ters number four, Paseo Robles, now known as Kissimmee Board of Directors and provide direction to staff.
Okay, council, there, hold on. There are nine people on here. If you look at page two-seventy in your packet, uh you'll see there's a one-year uh vacancy for, that was left by Mr. Gleason. Mr. Scott's two-year term expired at the end of December. And then uh the next one is the Brookfield person, that they named who that person will be. Uh we have a finance position, which is our um finance director, Mr. Locke, which would start a two-year term. And then there's position seven, which is the precinct three uh county commissioner, and that would be filled by um Ms. Morgan Hammer, who was elected in November. So the ones that are up are two and three, and we're looking to confirm five, six, and seven. And then also, I am on it, but the chair only serves a one-year term at a time. I'm willing to chair again, so we need to address these one by one, if y'all are okay with that. So I will put my name in contention for chair.
I second that.
Thank you. All right. So let's vote on that one, Ms. Trevino.
Okay, hold on. There it goes.
Go on, also, it doesn't work. Hit the button again.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Now we need to fill a, a one-year term that was left vacant by Mr. Gleason.
That's the one I kinda jumped on quickly. I, I greatly appreciate to be on that opportunity, cheers.
So you are volunteering?
Yes, ma'am.
Volunteer. Uh anyone else interested in being on this board? Doesn't meet often, meets during the day, it's not real exciting. We hit some, there's things we have to do.
Then after this, we have another one, very.
Uh Downtown Ters.
Oh, for this, we're appointing how many people?
Well, uh we will, it's a one-year left by Mr. Gleason. Uh Mr. Scott is up for, uh his term has expired, but he could be reappointed. And then the others, um.
It's with Debbie, yeah.
Yeah.
And Matthew, you're interested in?
Please, yes.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay. One for one, Ms. Trevino.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right.
Thank you.
And then we have Mr. Scott's position. It's a two-year. I'm waiting for you to say something, Mr. Scott.
Uh, yes, I'll do it again.
Okay, you're interested? Anybody else?
I'll do, I'll do it if he doesn't want to.
No, he said he's interested. You just can't hear him, cuz he's not projecting his voice very well.
Mr. Scott, what's your attendance record? Wanna switch?
What's that?
You wanna let me take it?
You wanna do it?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
All right. So now we have Ms. Rodriguez, who has volunteered.
Put it to work.
And anymore? One for one, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. And are y'all good if I go ahead and put Mr. Matheson for Brookfield, Mr. Locke, that was for five, for six, Mr. Locke, and number seven, Commissioner Hammer, all together? Y'all good with that?
Yeah.
All right, it'll be three for three, Ms. Trevino.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. That concludes Ters Board number four. Now we're to Ters Board number five, which is Downtown. Um.
Mayor, do you want me to read the caption?
Oh, yeah, that'd be a good idea, Ms. Trevino. Thank you.
Discuss and consider appointment or reappointments to position one and confirm Hayes County appointment to position four, two, and appoint a chair to the tax increment reinvestment zone, number five Downtown Board of Direct- Directors and provide directions to staff.
Okay. So that would be my position. We put Ms. Rodriguez on for a vacancy already. Uh and item three, uh Hayes Commissioners Court, that would be Debbie Gonzalez Inglesby. Item four, uh from Hayes is uh Judge Becerra. Item five, the citizen is not up this year. So uh we need to elect uh position one. I'm willing to continue and the two, and confirm the two Hayes nominees. All good? Can I add, can I be chair on that, too, and we just vote once?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I second that.
Okay. We'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. And then I'd like to put into play for the two Hayes positions, um Ms. Inglesby and Judge Becerra. And they've been named by the Commissioners Court. So let's go.
Seven, what, motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Now, the exciting one is uh item thirteen, Ms. Trevino.
Discuss and consider annual appointments to various boards and commissions to wit. A, Animal Shelter Advisory Committee; B, Arts Commission; C, Cemetery Commission; D, Citizen Utility Advisory Board; E, Convention and Visitors Bureau Board; F, Economic Developments San Marcos Board; G, Ethics Review Commission; H, Historic Preservation Commission; I, Housing Authority; J, Human Services, Human Services Advisory Board; K, Library Board; L, Main Street Advisory Board; M, Neighborhood Commission; N, Parking Advisory Board; O, Parks and Recreation Board; B, Planning and Zoning Commission; Q, Senior Citizen Advisory Board; R, Veteran Affairs Advisory Board; S, Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Okay, council, there's, I think, one or more um opportunities on any of these?
So we're just, are we going in order?
We can go in order, or sometimes we do P and Z first. What do y'all wanna do?
In order.
Then we can start with airport.
I meant in order, but I have it listed here.
It's airport.
Wait a minute. Oh.
It's airport, that animal.
Where is airport?
I meant how it was on the agenda, but I don't care either way. Like, we could do it.
No, I'm, I'm looking at my list, but.
Oh, sorry, airport is not on this.
Okay, so we cannot do airport today.
Oh, yikes.
Correct? Ms. Trevino? Since airport isn't on the list, we will not be doing airport today?
Is it on the agenda? I am so apologizing, Mayor, it's not. No, it's not on there. Airport is not on there.
Okay, sorry, I was looking at the list, but it's not on the agenda, so we will hold on airport. We don't need to postpone, cuz it's not on there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Then in that case, we'll pick up with Animal Shelter.
I'm gonna nominate Mr. Bo-Kid, or um Bo-Kid, excuse me.
And that is for the city of Buta position, and he has been, we've gotten it, his name from them, correct, Ms. Trevino?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that all that, that's open? It's just one for Buta?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That would be correct.
Twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
Okay. And that lasts till twenty-twenty-eight?
Yep. Okay, one for one.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Arts Commission.
I have a nomination.
Okay.
Um David Rodriguez.
Been nominated by Ms. Rodriguez. Um.
We're not related. I'm just, I'm just playing.
Um, we have two uh who have served and wish to be reappointed, so I will put the name of Jason Weems and Nina Lou Stein. And we're looking for three.
I am interested in Sarah Wingfield.
Mm-hmm, me too.
Okay. Any others to be nominated? Ms. Trevino, you printed these documents for us, right?
The matrix?
Uh huh.
Yes.
Does everybody have a copy?
Do you have a matrix?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just.
Okay.
Can you review who you, who all?
Uh, the two that wanted to be reappointed, which was Jason Weems and Nina Lou Stein. Another name is David Rodriguez has been put into play, and also Sarah Wingfield. So we now have four for three, so we'll be voting. Anymore? Ms. Trevino? Yeah, you're gonna have to go around the table. Uh you will give her three names. Let's go with first names.
All right, Ms. Rodriguez.
Um Jason, David, and Sarah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Gonz- Saul Gonzalez?
Uh, it's gonna be Jason and uh David. Uh, it's gonna be Jason and, uh, David. And Nina?
Nina, okay.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Garza?
Uh, Jason, David, Sarah.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Heeson?
Uh, Jason, Nina? Ooh, this is a tough one. Uh, David.
David, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Scott?
Um, Jason, David, and Sarah.
Thank you. Mr. Mendosa?
Weems, Stein, Wingfield.
I'm sorry, Weems?
Uh, Weems, uh, Jason Weems.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could just use first names and do them in the same order as they are on the form.
Jason, Nina, and Sarah.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Jason, David, Sarah.
Okay. So those appointed is Jason, David, and Sarah.
All right. Next is Cemetery Commission. We need two, we have two people.
Uh, I'd like to nominate, um, Adriana Montoya.
Adriana's name is in play. I would like to nominate Cindy Casperas and Patsy Poel.
I'm sorry, what was the second one that you said?
Patsy Poel, the second name.
Gotcha, okay. And we need how many, we need?
We need two. We have three so far, is there? And, I mean, you know, fortunate. Ms. Trevino, would you tell us how many people applied, and how many more than last year applied?
Yes, so we received for this year a hundred and fifty-eight. Last year, we received about one thirty-seven.
Okay.
One thirty-one, so.
Love a civically engaged community.
Good job, you, Miss Sarley and her team, you and your team, got the word out.
Yeah, shout out staff.
So, Cindy and Adriana have already been named, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And Patsy.
And Patsy, okay.
No other names? Then we will vote. If you would use the first name, and in the same order as they are on the list, makes this much easier.
Okay. Mr. Saul Gonzalez?
Uh, it's gonna be Cindy and Ariana.
Um, Ms. Garza?
Uh, Cindy and Adriana.
Okay. Mayor Heeson?
Cindy and Patsy.
Mr. Uh, Scott?
Patsy, excuse me, Patsy and Ariana.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mendosa?
Uh, Cindy and Patsy.
All right. Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Uh, Cindy and Adriana.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Uh, Cindy and Adriana.
Okay. So Cindy and Adriana have been appointed.
Next is the Citizens Utility Advisory Board. Recall that when we're talking about rate changes and other things, this is the board that, um, staff provides extensive presentations to, and they, uh, make a recommendation to us. I would like to, uh, put forward the name of Michael Markowitz, who is currently serving and, uh, would like to be reappointed.
Um... I'd like to put forward Samantha Peppas. Looks like she's the one that qualifies for that position anyways. Because that vacancy has to be someone in financing and accounting, correct?
Yeah, and Ms. Trevino, was she put, I didn't see anything in her history to indicate the, the financial part.
Yeah, so on that side, it seems like she's not eligible.
She's not eligible?
She's not eligible.
Wait, Samantha Peppas is not eligible at all? Why?
I think so.
She's not the, not, just for the finance position?
I was gonna suggest this John Billadue, who's got forty-one years of experience in the energy. Um, Arena?
For the, for the...
For the second one. What's wrong with that?
Yeah, I mean, I just put Samantha for it, because according to the, at least the digital spreadsheet, it looked like she's the one that qualified, because it says... Or, unless I'm reading the spreadsheet incorrectly.
I, I, I think that Mayor may not...
Oh, that's just a no.
Be correct.
It says fine account resident.
However, I'm just gonna draw to your attention that she has been an ethics teacher, and I was gonna nominate her on the Ethics Commission. So, but if you want her name forward, we will put her name forward.
I mean, like I said, I was doing it, because I thought she was the one that would meet that requirement. So then, if we don't, are we only gonna fill the one position? Since the, one of the vacancies does require someone to be, have a financial...
That's where I'm suggesting this John Billadue is for that one.
For the finance one, because he specifically says...
I would draw my...
Right.
Yeah.
My nom, her nomination, and...
Okay. So, we are at, uh, Mr. Markowitz and John, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Billadue.
I have, I have...
Any others?
John for the finance, and then Jordan Rogers for the second one.
Okay.
Maybe I should have the paper, it looks like it might be more updated.
But, does he fill the finance?
No, well, John fills the finance.
Oh, that's right, so, oh, this is gonna get trickier. Okay.
I think John's the only one who fills the finance.
This one is always tough. It's wonderful to have so many. Uh, and there's a lot to look at. Let's see. Appointments, application packet. Hold on a second. And you're gonna bring Airport Board back, correct? Uh, yeah, the, the John gentleman has business background, budget and financial analysis experience.
For like, uh...
Worked in natural gas, okay. And who was the other one, did you say Rogers?
Yes.
Okay, hang on. I don't see the high finance.
Well, the second one isn't, doesn't have to be limited to finance, right?
I know, but the Markowitz is not finance. So if we don't have John, we don't have a finance.
I believe Alyssa was referring to replacing...
Markowitz?
With Jordan.
Right. Okay.
Which would not be a finance.
Well, we're gonna have to be, whenever we give our vote, we're gonna have to take all that into consideration. Okay, so we've got three people in play, uh, but only one for finance, to do the finance slot. Okay? I guess we're, anybody else? Uh, Ms. Trevino, we're ready to vote, and we've got three for two.
Okay. Ms. Garza?
So we're naming both right now? Okay.
You're gonna, you're gonna give two names.
Okay. Finance, the John guy?
Mm-hmm.
And then the at-large? Uh, this is tough, because Marco, whatever.
Perfect.
Yeah. And he's the, they want to be reappointed, right?
Yes, he does.
Yeah. I'll go with, with Michael, just because he has served already.
Okay. Um, Mayor Heeson, thank you.
Uh, Michael and John?
Uh, Mr. Scott?
Michael and John.
Mr. Mendosa?
Michael and John.
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Michael and John.
Uh, Ms. Rodriguez?
Michael and John?
Uh, Mr. Saul Gonzalez?
Michael and John.
All right. Michael and John it is.
But, I would agree that Jordan Rogers seems like a very impressive individual, and, uh, I wish that they had found a couple of other places that they would be interested, because I think, I think that's some value that would come to one of our Boards and Commissions.
Yeah, I just saw that that was their only, the only one.
All right.
But I wonder, I wonder if they knew that, though, because in their application, it talks about them wanting to just serve on a Board and Commission in general.
And they have...
Yeah, and sometimes when we are short, then we can go back, and if somebody wants to call them and say, "Hey, would you be interested in, on X Commissioner," or whatever, then that, that can come back. Okay, CBB? Uh, I know we need four, so I had, um, hold on a second. One, two.
Is it just?
Isn't it five?
Says we need four.
I know. Ms. Trevino, would you look at that list?
Yes.
If you're looking at the matrix?
I am.
It looks like, I didn't catch this earlier.
I think it requires specific people for specific spots, right?
Yeah, for those watching at home, there's positions for hotel room, less than ninety rooms, Texas State Athletics, um, Heritage or Museum Rep, Chamber of Commerce, Hotel Motel Rep, um, those are the ones that are up. River Natural Area, Impactful Annual Event, Downtown Business, Food and Beverage, Arts and Co, there, every one of these has a slot to fill, if you will. We don't have any Citizen at Large on this one that I know of. Uh, I think it's five for five.
They named this Ms. Mendosa.
It is, okay.
So the fifth one, it was the...
Luis.
Luis.
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay. So we have five people. Uh, they're all eligible for a second term. So, uh, shall we put in the name of, for Hotel, Vic Patel, Texas State Athletics, Daniel Correll, uh, Heritage Museum Rep, Linda Coker, Chamber Rep, Paige Michelle, and then for the Hotel Motel Rep, uh, Luis Nunez. Are we good with that? Okay. That should be five, so five for five.
Mr. Scott? Did it work?
It shows he's pressed it.
Seven to zero.
Okay. Okay, now, we have EDSM, that is Economic Development Sam Marcus. They, uh, review incentives and other such things with recommendations to Council. And I believe, we, we have some, we have some vacancies on here that we're going to need to, um, look for.
Mayor, can I ask some clarification? Um, I was confused. It says term two, does that, are they termed out?
That means they've, they've completed their second term.
Okay.
And our rules are, unless there's exceptions...
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, two terms, gotta stay out at least one year...
Okay.
For this one. Now, they could go directly to another Board or Commission, but yeah, two terms, and you have to stay off at least a year, then you're eligible to return.
So, right now, none of the folks that were there are eligible?
Uh, yes.
Except Josh.
Yeah, Josh is, and, um, Ms. Commissioner Inglesby would be, because...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll definitely put Mr. Josh as a name in there.
Okay, certainly.
Yes, ma'am. If I can also add William Strohacker?
Okay. For the management of business of one hundred plus? Okay. Uh, that still leaves a medium business rep, small business rep, and a CEO, uh, or finance, CEO finance. Um, and we will be looking for those, uh, to fill those positions. But we could go ahead and do the three that we have now.
Wait, um, if we reappoint, uh, Mr. Pasalic here, does that mean he can't serve on P and Z, or could he also?
That would be correct.
Oh.
You can serve on a, I'm gonna call a regular Board and Commission, and then there's some temporary and some other things, but those two, he could not serve on both at the same time.
Gotcha. Well, I really wanna support Mr. Pasalic for P and Z. Is there anybody else?
I didn't see an application for Mr. Pasalic for P and Z.
I did speak to Josh at the Buckeyes event. Yeah, he did explain that this is the one he does want. He didn't fill out his application for P and Z. He wanted to concentrate on, on this particular, uh, Board, which, that's what I was thinking, it'd be fantastic to bring...
Well, and I think we should, we need to keep him, because we're losing some experience.
Yeah, uh, Josh has been great for, for this Board.
So...
Gotcha.
If that's his desire, I think we need to...
Well, thank you for letting me know, because that's not what I...
I thought he was, he was supposed to contact the people and let them know, but, um, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. Um, but then, so the other ones are gonna be filled out?
Well, we're gonna need to put the word out, and to get...
The small business CEO and...
Small, medium, and finance CEO. I believe I'm correct on that. I'll let Ms. Trevino work that out for sure, before we put the word out.
Is this one of these Boards, Mayor, that we need to have filled out? I mean, as if they're gonna meet next month, or is this something we can hold off a month or two?
We can hold off.
Okay.
The small business rep, is that different from, isn't there somebody who has like, oh, no, JK, that's not... Or management of business a hundred plus?
And, uh, Ms. Trevino, in this particular case, it would be, if we have any Boards and Commissions, and we don't have enough applicants, it goes back out, um, the same way for, um, engagement, citizen engagement, letting them know what's going on.
We work with the liaison to make sure that they spread the word, we do our part, so...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, shall we at least get these three folks back on, or two back on, and, and one appointed?
Well, I, I was gonna ask, since we're gonna have to do Airport at a future date, can we just postpone?
All of them?
Yeah, just postpone all of them?
We, we could.
Oh, just in case there's somebody, like, we have to, like, move around the puzzle?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Or, or we can just not do this now. We could come back to it at the end today, but, uh, we're just, the applications aren't there.
Well, no, I, I guess what I was saying is, like, if one of these three, like, could fill two rows, for example, so I'm, I'm trying to get it, for...
No, because we need the, the, however many this is. Seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no, eight, nine...
We could fill the rows now, the ones that we have available, and put the kick out there to say, hey, just, uh, we could end up, again, reappointing these individuals if nobody else applies.
No.
Oh, we couldn't?
No, we will find people, there, there will be people who will apply, if they know it's open.
That, that's, that's awesome, then, I just want people to...
Mayor? Well, I, I guess my question, which, I, I mean, I'm not even sure if this example is even realistic, but, for example, if, um, we appoint Buck, reappoint Buck Crouch as a small business rep, but saying they rep a s- small manufacturing business, and we later get another small business rep, can we then move them to manufacturing?
Yes, matter of fact, we're gonna be doing that at one shortly.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, we, we can...
I thought once we put them as one category, they're, they're stuck at that category, that's why I was thinking of postponing it.
As long as they qualify...
For both, then?
For, for both.
Okay, cool.
Yes, yeah, we, we can do that, and we have done that before. Uh, sometimes we'll have a Citizen at Large that actually could fill a slot. When that slot becomes available, we'll put them in that slot, and then we have another Citizen at Large. Not in this case, but we've, we've done that before. Um, yes, ma'am?
Mr. Pantalian has something to add to that.
Yes, oh, and, hold on. These appointments take effect March one. So these folks will still be on the Board until the end of February. Okay, go ahead.
And, uh, in regards to the, um, potential postponement of all the appointments for this Board, just wanna make sure the Council's aware that, uh, we likely need, uh, some of these to meet form. So it's very important for us to have these, some of these members.
We'll have it on our next agenda. And they, the, the people who are on now will be on through the end of February, so we'll be able to get through whatever we need to do at that next meeting.
That's right.
So, yeah, I'd, I'd like to go ahead and do these, but... Okay, who wants to postpone this, and who wants to go ahead and, and get Economic Development at least three of them done?
I'd like to just get three out of the way, just.
Okay, so we got you as one to get it done. I'd like to go ahead and get it done. That's two.
I'm to postpone.
Okay, get, get these three done, and then the word is out. Anybody else?
My reason for postponing was because I thought we locked these three in at the position we put them in, but if that's not the case, then, I mean, I guess I necessarily have a reason to postpone.
Well, we're, if, de facto postponing the vacancies because we don't have anybody. So you're good with going ahead and filling these three now?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, um, then we'll put into play the names of Josh Pasal, Commissioner Inglesby, and William Strohacker. That's three for three. We'll look for the others.
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Lorenzo, can you?
I just did that.
Oh, there you go, okay. Seven to zero.
All right. Word will go out. So, now we're to Ethics.
I have a recommendation.
Okay.
Um, Alyssa Ramirez and James Bryan Jr.
Uh, I would like to put the name of Samantha Peppas in.
I, I'd like to put, uh, Mr. Rios. I'm sorry, not Mr. Rios, um, Mr. Rangel.
Mr. Rangel by Mr. Mendoza.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Riley Chandler.
So we've, we said who so far? Alyssa, Riley?
The, actually, the one, two, three, four for the first five. Rangel, I'm sorry, Bryant, Rangel, Ramirez, Chandler, and Peppas.
Gotcha.
Actually, I'll do Ra- Ramirez and Chandler.
Um, well, not to make.
Well, they're, 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 they've been nominated.
Yeah.
They're out there. So, we'll s- I'm seeing, I'm waiting to see if we've got anybody else, that, anybody wants to nominate?
Okay, I'm sorry, remind me again who's already been nominated.
Okay, uh, the first five.
Okay.
Bri- James Bryant, Marco Rangel, Alyssa Ramirez, Riley Chandler, and Samantha Peppas. She was, she's the one that was the ethics teacher, is, is why I was suggesting her for this. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, anymore? Okay, uh, for Mr. Venio, you're gonna vote for two. Please use their first name. Please give them in the order in which they are on the list makes Mr. Venio's job a whole lot easier.
Mary Heeson.
Um. Rangel. And Peppas.
Okay, Mr. Scott.
Rangel and Peppas.
Thank you. Mr. Mendoza.
Uh, Rangel and Peppas.
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Oh, Bryant and Chandler.
Bryant and Chandler. Uh, Ms. Rodriguez.
Uh, let's do Alyssa and Riley.
Uh, Mr. Saul Gonzalez.
James and Alyssa.
James and Alyssa, okay. Ms. Garza.
I'm gonna do Riley and, dang, this is tough, um.
Yeah, it is. My, my vote not for someone doesn't mean that I don't think that they could do a good job, we're just having to make choices. You say the one?
Damn, this is hard.
I know.
Riley and, um.
Shall I start the Jeopardy music?
Wait, where did you get that Peppas was a teacher? I didn't see it on her application.
Um, found it somewhere, on the application.
Oh, I didn't.
Ethics, so.
Um, okay.
Former ethics professor.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha. Um, I didn't copy that over. Uh, dang, okay, so I said Riley, I'll do Riley and, um, James.
Okay, that is everybody. We have a tie.
Just gonna say.
James, Marco, Riley, and Samantha.
Oh, gee.
We have a tie. James, three each. James, Samantha, James? It's a first five. James.
Wait, say that, who it is?
I have James for three, Marco three, Riley three, and Samantha three.
Okay.
So essentially we've eliminated this.
So now, you have four to choose from. Again, giving the, I'm gonna need a colored pen here, different colors. Um, so if you would, again, give two names, first names, in the order in which they appear on the Z Matrix.
Okay, I'm gonna start with Mr. Scott.
Uh, James, Alyssa, Riley, Samantha.
What, what, only two?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, um.
And which is?
Choose two.
Um, let's go with James and Samantha.
Samantha, okay, thank you. Mr. Mendoza.
Uh, Marco and Samantha.
Marco and Samantha. Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Uh, James and Riley.
James and Riley. Uh, Ms. Rodriguez?
Um, Alyssa and Samantha.
Alyssa's not in the running anymore.
James and Samantha.
James and Samantha. Okay. Um, Mr. Saul Gonzalez?
Oh, James and Samantha.
Okay. Uh, Ms., Ms., um, Garza, sorry. I'm gonna do James and Riley. Okay, we have, um, James and Samantha.
Okay, next is, on my list is Historic Preservation Commission. Does that, am I, I'm going by my list, not what's on the agenda. I'm hoping all that drives. Okay, HPC. We need two.
I'm gonna nominate Jason Rivas and Thea Dake.
We have two people who have served one term and are eligible for the second term.
They both have to be, uh, his, uh, oh, just, like, they're, they're good to just be residents, right?
Yeah, history, if you're interested in the history of the city.
Um, the individuals were Mr. James Rivas and Ms. Thea Drake.
Okay, Thea's the appointee.
Dake.
Supposed to be Dake, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Oh, you're right. We, we've got some creative spellings here, but that's okay.
I'm gonna do, uh, Chase and Rivas and Jennifer Speed.
Wait, say that again?
Jason and Jennifer.
Oh, I thought you said Chase, okay. Uh, so you wanna add, uh, Jennifer Speed to the mix?
Yeah.
Okay. We need two, we have three. Any others?
Uh, I was gonna do the same thing. Jason and, uh, Jennifer.
They, their, their names are in play. We'll be voting as soon as I know. We only have three. It looks like we only have three. If you would, when, uh, Trinio calls your name, you need to vote for two.
Mr. Mendoza.
Jason and Thea.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Uh, Jason and Jennifer.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Uh, Jason and Jennifer.
Mr. Saul Gonzalez?
Uh, Jason and Thea.
Okay, Ms. Garza?
Uh, Jason and Jennifer.
Thank you. And, uh, Mary Heeson?
Uh, Jason and Thea.
Okay. I have Thea and Jennifer tied. Mayor, can you confirm?
Mr. Scott, I'm gonna.
Oh, Mr. Scott, I'm so sorry.
Mr. Scott, we need your vote.
He's so quiet.
Yeah, I guess I'll do it. Um, Jason and Jennifer.
Okay. Jason and Jennifer are appointed.
Next is Housing Authority.
I'm, I'm gonna definitely nominate, um, Ashley.
Okay.
And it's just one, right?
Uh, we only need one, yes, mm-hmm. So Ashley has been nominated by Mr. Mendoza. Anyone else? Mr. Venio, this is a one for one.
Motion passes seven to zero for Ashley.
All right, now we are at the Human Services Advisory Board. Um, I want to call to your attention that we've got a flaw in our, um, ordinance. It says there are three-year terms, and half of them get appointed in an even-numbered year, and half of them in an odd-numbered year, and that doesn't work with three-year terms. So I'll be bringing that on a future agenda for us to fix that. Uh, we, that doesn't have anything to do with how many we will appoint, just calling that to your attention. We'll let them draw lots for, and.
Okay.
We, we can let them work out who's gets what, if y'all are okay with that. The, the difference is, we can appoint them for a one-year term, do whatever, to, to make it even out. I couldn't even tell you how to do that right now, which one. So, let's just see if we can get some people on there and, and go from there. So, I'm looking for, uh, question, Mr. Venio, who is our, the non-voting social worker? That has to be a social worker, and we need to find one because the one we have is not wanting to be reappointed.
Right.
So we still got to find that slot.
A social, yes.
That's not a slot we can fill with a citizen. Okay, and with that in mind.
Mayor, on that one, though, um, do we, like, uh, as far as outreach for those things, just 'cause my ignorance, do we, um, like, reach out to the School of Social Work with Texas State to see if anybody would be interested in them?
Well, you should let the, um, liaison, kind of, cause she kinda knows the community and the organizations.
For the social worker.
For the social worker.
Okay, okay. I, it would be hard for me to think that we haven't done that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have to set that one aside. That one will have to come back. But in the meantime, we need five, and we have.
Four.
Four. Two are currently on and, uh, wish to be reappointed.
Should we just do four for four?
Oh, we can do that, if that's what you wanna do.
And we need.
And we still have a vacancy.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not the?
Social worker.
Correct. We have a vacancy of a, a, a regular, uh, member and the social worker both.
Um, I wonder if there's any way that, cause we're still gonna have a vacancy, right?
Correct.
That's really, um, I don't know if this is possible. We could, like, put it towards the end so that we could see if, uh, I don't know if she's here, Alyssa, what's her last name?
That's a good idea.
So, Ramirez would be interested in this one? Um, just based, yeah, just based on, like, the, cause the other one that she applied for, that was her only one, I think.
She filled an application. That seems fair. She filled an application, um.
Well, since this is gonna have to come back anyway, I would say that if there's someone in here that we're really impressed with who wasn't saying, oh, I have to only be on parks and I don't wanna be on anything else type thing, not that anybody does that. But if you got somebody, call them. There's somebody that I called because I thought they would better serve on a different group, and I called her last night, and she called and gave, uh, the information to, um, Ms. Cordova.
Maybe, could we postpone this one?
Or, we can.
We're gonna take a break in a few minutes.
Yeah, so we can vote for the one that we have.
That's what I was hoping for, both of us. But, i- if this is a minute, she did fill out the application, right?
But not for this one, but for another one.
Oh, no, as long as she filled out the application, I think that's more than fair.
Well, we need to make sure that they want to be on this board. But I would say, we're gonna take a break.
Okay.
Okay.
The phone number's in the application. So, let's go ahead and get these four done, if that's okay, and then we'll come back on this one.
That works out.
If y'all are good with that, and I'm making myself a note right now, that we need to come back to H S A B. Okay, so Mr. Mendoza, you have put the names of the, the four that we have, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So we're, this is a four for four.
Real quick, cause.
Yes, sir.
Unless I'm reading this incorrectly, and what I'm seeing is that we have five total vacancies, one of them being the social worker. So if we do fill these four, then Alyssa wouldn't be eligible because she's not a social worker.
Oh, you're right.
You're right. I was, it says need five, but it should say four plus social worker. Good catch.
You're right, you're right, you're right.
Good catch.
So do I delete this text?
No.
Well, I mean, I mean.
Let's just do the whole H S A B at the end.
I'm quoting.
And we'll give people some time to do whatever. We'll, we'll, we'll do H S A B at the end of, well, the, uh, good catch, Mr. L. Gonzalez. Okay, Library. We're gonna do Library now. We need three. We've got three people who are eligible for a second term. So I'll put the names of Stephanie Daniels, uh, Dwana Goldstone, and Vanessa McMahon in play. But we can certainly take other names.
Oh, I think that's fine. I'm fine with them. Cause the other one too, who are?
Yes. Okay, if there are no other nominations, this will be a three for three vote. Mr. Scott, would you hit your button again? It looks like you're just gonna have to hit it two or three times every time this evening.
I meant to put yes, not no. That was my bad.
No, you have a yes, but Mr. Scott has a no.
Oh, then our wires must, our wires must be crossed because.
Oh, wait a minute. You punched yes?
Yeah, I punched yes.
She punched no?
It's okay.
And it says Mr. Scott's a no?
Yeah. Oh, that's right, cause we, we.
Oh, because, yeah. Oh, yeah, we're gonna have to get those names fixed. Okay, regardless, but you wanted to say yes, so it's a seven.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm fine with those two.
So then, all night when we've been thinking Mr. Scott's not voting, it's actually Ms.
Um, I've been clicking yes, so don't come for me, Lorenzo.
Now we know.
I've been clicking yes. Somebody fix it. Where's IT?
All right. Um, how about we do Main Street, and then do y'all wanna take a break? Cause they'll be right at seven thirty-ish. So let's do Main Street. I, you beat me to it.
And I'm gonna nominate Mr. Von Hart.
Uh-huh.
Uh, Adam?
Speak up, please, if we're not, don't be embarrassed about anything we're doing up here. We're in public, speak up.
I scared. I'm gonna nominate Adam.
Wait, we need two or three?
We need two.
Why does my thing say three?
No, it should be three.
Three?
No, it's two.
Two, don't need two.
It says three, but it should be two. Am I, are we correct on that?
That's correct.
Should be two? Okay. So, for right now, the names that are in play are Adam Von Art by Mr. Mendoza and Mr. Arredondo by Mr. Scott, and, by me?
Wait, so who's on?
Nominated are Adam Von Art and Miguel Arredondo. And we need two.
Uh, I had a question. So on the, I guess on the digital version that was sent to us earlier, Duane Bradley says that they wanna be reappointed.
Yes.
But in the paper version, their name's not on here? Was that just left off, or did it say?
Yes, it was incorrect. So he's on the board, but he expires on twenty twenty-six, next year.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Oh, so it wasn't, so his name's not in play anyway?
At all. Not at all.
Cool, so we had a vacancy?
We do have a vacancy.
We're gonna do a re-up and fill the vacancy. Yes.
That's for two vacancies, right?
That's for two.
Well, there's two, but, but, uh, Ms. Mendoza has nominated Adam Von Art to re-up.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you, there's only two total, so you have Adam, and then you have, uh, Miguel.
Uh-huh.
So those are good?
Those are the only names that have been brought forward?
Okay.
Okay.
And if I can say, I wanna thank, not only Mr. Arredondo, but Mr. Rodney here and Mr. Moreno here that have shown up. These are, thank you, guys, for, you applied, and I appreciate you guys being.
And, and Airport wasn't on the agenda somehow, so, we'll, next time.
But it definitely means a lot that you guys.
Yeah.
Came here, thank you.
And may we vote now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Gotta say it.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Alrighty. And let's take a five-minute break, and we're gonna come back and do Neighborhood. From our break at seven forty, and now we pick up with the Neighborhood Commission. Again, this is one where there's certain slots, and we actually don't have everybody for each of the slots. We're gonna have to do some looking. But, um, if y'all are okay, Tyler Barstow is the Division of Student Affairs Rep., and that name has been given to us by the university. So I'm gonna put that one into play. Let's see, Mr. Arredondo, we just put on Main Street, so we mark him off with this one.
Is it safe just to do everybody except for Mr. Arredondo since?
We, I'm trying to name them so that we know exactly, because there's, there's, there's two here that don't want to be reappointed, and there's one that's in a sector that we don't need an appointment for. So I need to read the names out.
Okay.
Okay, um, and then we have Samantha Benavides, who has applied for Sector Eight. We have Roland Sausado, who has applied for Five. Michael Adams wants to continue with Five. Because of the population in Five, we do have two people, uh, that can be on from Five. And then we have a Michael Vernon, who wants to reapply for Sector Six. Make note that that leaves a vacancy, we have vacancies in Sectors Three and Nine. Okay. Is everybody okay with what I just said?
Yep.
Yeah, cause we only have enough.
That's, yeah, that's it. Okay, Ms. Venio, we're gonna go for, uh, one, two, three, four, five for five. Would you push your button again?
Alyssa.
Uh-huh. All right. All right, Parking Advisory Board. All right, Parking Advisory Board. I believe, uh, Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez, this is one where we're gonna do exactly what you were talking about earlier. Is, um, we have, oh, wait a minute, do we still need to do this?
For Ida Miller?
Uh-huh.
No, we have her here as a Downtown Associate Rep.
She is now?
Mm-hmm, yes.
But she wasn't before, she was a Citizen at Large, we had a vacancy in the Downtown Rep. So since she qualifies for that and they have agreed, we put her in that slot, which opened up a Citizen at Large slot. And this is one of those, it's kind of hard to find.
For park.
For parking, parking, yeah. Ida's over here, but the, the, the one that Corinna left vacant, Ida's gonna slide into that one, which leaves a Citizen at Large slot open for someone else. Otherwise, we'd have to be finding the Downtown person.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah. So that one kind of, kind of worked out. So, we need three, um, and, uh, I would like to put the name of Rosalie Ray in, she's willing to re-up, and she has been a very good member, she's very productive. Mr. Maureen, I guess?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'm gonna put his name in as a, uh, business owner within the downtown area.
I'd like to nominate Alana, please.
Okay, and that would be for a Citizen at Large slot. And we need three.
Mr. Rodriguez is a different.
We appointed to something else.
Mr. Rodriguez is on the.
Yeah.
We appointed him to something, the.
Arts.
Arts Commission, yeah.
Um.
So we have right now, Jo, Jo.
Who have been, Rosalie, Alana.
Rosalie, re-up, and Alana for Citizen at Large.
If we appointed Alana to Parking, can she still be on P and Z?
No.
Okay, so then I'd like to nominate David Rodriguez.
David's on Arts, we put him on Arts.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Who's available?
Can we appoint Steve's?
Mm-mm.
Uh, I, I really liked Alana's application, I just think that, I, I, I think she'd be a great asset to Parking Board, I mean, that's just, she's right there. I mean, she was, she seemed like somebody who was really out there, um.
Steve has only been in, he's been here three weeks when he filed his application.
Well, I'm just thinking, because Alana put P and Z as first, so I mean, I'd, I'd like to, but.
She's done that, that would pass her over for P and Z.
Really?
Yeah.
Three?
I want to, and this is at least, this is not the first time, I want it to be three, yeah.
I, I just thought that, I felt that she'd be awesome in Parking.
I thought she'd be good on Parking also. Okay, do you want to set this one aside, do P and Z first, come back to this one?
That's fine.
Then let's do that. We need three, and I would like to put the name of David Case in. He's doing a good job as Chair.
Oh, yeah, he was Chair.
Yeah.
I don't know why I'm ahead of.
He's been Chair a year.
I'm gonna nominate, um, David Case, Mariah Dunn, and Rodney Van Oderker.
I've already put David Case's name down.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay, give me your, your others.
Then we'll go for Dunn and Van Oderker.
Oderker, yeah.
Oderker, I probably say Oderker.
I could say it like the guy said it in the play.
Uh, I wanted to nominate Alana.
All right. Alana's name is in play. We've got, we've got four for three.
I mean, it's, you said David Case.
Uh-huh. She has been nominated.
I mean, I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm just wanting to repeat to make sure.
Right. Mm-hmm, Rodney?
And that's it.
Mm-hmm, just four.
I'd like to nominate Casey Windsor as well.
Yeah, uh, yeah, my David.
Alana and Casey.
Okay. Are there any more? Alrighty, then, um, there are five names in play, vote for three, same as before, if you'll give the first name, and in the order in which they're here, it's so much easier. Ms. Trevino, let's go around the table.
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Uh, I'll do, uh, David, Alana, and Rodney.
Okay, Ms. Rodriguez.
I'll do David, Alana, and Casey.
Uh, Mr. Salvo Gonzalez.
I do David, Dunn, and Rodney.
Need one more.
He said Maria.
Oh, it's because he said Dunn and not Maria.
I didn't hear Dunn.
Yes, thank you, um, Ms. Garza.
I'm gonna do David, Alana, and Casey.
Mayor Heeson.
David, Mariah, and Rodney.
Okay, um, Mr. Scott.
Uh, David, Mariah, and Rodney.
And Rodney, and, uh, Mr. Mendoza.
David, Mariah, and Rodney.
Okay, so, um, it is David, uh, Mariah, and Rodney.
Okay, do y'all want to go back to Parking now? Uh, back to Car, Parking to review, um, I and others have put in the name of Jovan, uh, Rosalie, and Alana, we need three. Reminding you that David Rodriguez, we put on Arts.
Oh, we're going back to Parking?
We're going back to Parking.
Okay.
And then we'll just, you know, go alphabetically from there.
Okay. And I'm sorry, who did you mention, Mayor?
Uh, the first three, uh, Jovan, Rosalie, and Alan, is it Lana or Elena?
I think it's Alana.
Alana?
Alana, okay, well, I'll go with that. Okay. Are there more?
Um, and we need.
We've got three for three.
Oh, nevermind, okay.
I guess we'll vote then.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
Alrighty, on to the Parks Board. We need two. You know, sometimes Main Street has looked like this, and sometimes Arts has looked like this, it's just kind of interesting, but Parks is usually pretty popular.
I'm gonna renominate or nominate Mr. John Tumatis.
I'm sorry, did you mention one or two people?
Uh, just right now, so far, it's Mr. Tumatis.
I'm gonna nominate Mr. Mitchell Lee Hoffman. You're gonna have to speak up, Mr. Scott. You gotta speak up. Okay.
I was gonna, I was gonna nominate, um, Jordan K. Lang.
Okay.
They had a good application, and, uh, Camille Busby also had a good application.
You putting that name in play?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. That name's familiar, I think maybe we had applications last year.
Um.
Okay.
Uh, hold on. We said, I'm sorry, can you guys repeat who, uh?
Uh, yes, we have Mitchell, John, skipped two, Jordan, skipped way down to Camille.
To Camille, and we only need two, right?
We only need two.
Okay, I think I'll be showing, okay. I don't have anything extra.
So we need, we have four nominated, and we need two.
All right, um, Ms. Rodriguez.
Uh, Jordan and Camille.
Jordan and Camille, um, Mr. Salvo Gonzalez.
Jordan and, oh, Camille.
Ms. Garza?
I'll do John and Jordan.
Mayor Heeson?
Uh, Mitchell and John.
Okay, uh, Mr. Scott?
Yeah, Mitchell and John.
And Jordan?
He said, he said. Mitchell and John, I think.
Oh, John, okay, sorry, kidding. Right here, all right, uh, Mr. Mendoza.
Mitchell and John.
Okay, and Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Jordan and John.
Jordan and John.
Did you, who, which two?
Uh, Jordan and John.
John and.
Okay, they were out of order, they threw me.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's all right.
So appoint, appointment is Jordan and John.
All right, next up is Senior Citizens, we need four. Uh, we only have three, and, um, I talked to someone Sunday night, I think it was, and, uh, who applied for a different board, but in the, what I'm interested in was senior issues, um, and asked if she would be interested in senior. She said yes, but she was supposed to call, um, Ms. Cordova and didn't, so I don't know if she changed her mind or what. But we need four, and we've only got three, so do you want to just push this one?
Well, I, um, I, I was gonna say the same thing, I actually spoke to a young lady who applied for the Veterans Board, um, her name is Karen, and, uh, she's a senior citizen, and I thought this brought the same thing up to you, now she did fill out an application, she did call earlier. Um, I don't know where the conversation had gone to, but it feels a little odd, to be honest with you, to just throw a name out there without them applying. I, I understand she filled out the application, but it's.
She did apply, she just didn't ask for this one.
She, she did not, so, um, I can understand if it, if it's not kosher with my colleagues.
But you, but you have talked to her.
I have, yes, ma'am.
And she's interested.
She is interested, but she just did not have.
We got that part.
Place under there, so, um, again, if my colleagues are willing to go with that route, under, that's great, if not, I completely understand postponing it until we get the full set.
Is one of these not eligible? Because they don't live in the city?
Right.
There was Veronica Cho, Thompson.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, yeah, he, yeah, he doesn't want to be on again.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so, hang on. I mean, I'm, hang on, senior, so, yeah, we're taking off Veronica, Wayne. No, wait, where did that one come from? Oh, she's not real, okay, I see. Uh, she was lined out because she's not eligible, my brain was just not looking at that one, so do we want to bring this one back?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm fine with that, I mean, if, uh, if you know that your person's planning on to submit an application, I, I would like to review it, so.
I definitely want to make sure that she does that.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we can wait, that's fine.
Okay, perfect.
That's Karen.
That's Karen, yeah, and it, and it's, it would be fair for her to be listed, guys.
Oh, no, for sure.
May I give you the motion to postpone senior citizens?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Mendoza will second. So, let's vote on this one, this is vote to postpone senior citizen.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, so that one will come back, we'll talk to our folks, make sure they get their applications where they should be. Alrighty, now, we have two left, we have the Veterans Affairs Advisory, it says Board, I think it's actually Committee. Um, and we need four, and we have three people who have been serving and wish to be reappointed. So I will put the names of Stephanie Brown, Joel Scott, and Alana Trammell in play.
And Mayor, if you can include Joseph, uh, Rodriguez as well.
You put that name in play, and we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So, who did you say, Mayor?
The first three, Stephanie Brown, Joel Scott, and Alana Trammell.
And then Amanda Joseph.
Wait, uh, Mr. Mendoza, is that, that the same Karen?
It's the same young lady.
So she's, she's for sure thinking about the other?
That is a hundred percent, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, because she was my alternate, so.
Nor, nor is she a veteran.
And that was my concern, she, and she admitted that, saying, I'm not a veteran, she just wanted help, so, yes, ma'am, she's.
We love people that want help.
I love it, I love all these apps.
Okay, so right now, we have four for four names in play.
Four.
Mr. Rodriguez is a great choice.
Four, far.
Okay.
Good. Any other names? We're voting on four for four, Ms. Trevino?
For the record, we're not family either.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, ZBOA is a, uh, different type of, um.
Yes, sir.
Of, of organization, would you like to just briefly explain ZBOA, Mr. Pentalian? It's a, it's a different breed of cat than our other boards and commissions.
Um, sure, uh, the ZBOA typically meets to vote on kind of variances to our code that don't typically track to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So they're really for exceptions to our, our, um, building-related codes.
And appeal there is.
I believe it goes to District Court, not to Council.
Does not, does not come to, to us, so, uh, this one's a little different, and the board is, how many people are on the, actually on the board? Remind me, is it five, Ms. Trevino?
Oh, my goodness, sorry, Mayor, I had to.
Oh, wait a minute, one, two, three, four, five, no, it's, well, there's five.
And then two alternates.
And then alternate two.
That's correct.
And generally, when a vacancy occurs on the board, alternate one moves up, because, because of the legal nature, we want to make sure we have all five, or we have five people there.
Right, it's, it's an unusual board, because it requires, for certain variances, it requires, uh, four votes typically, for a variance to be approved. And so, it's, if you have an app, an absence, it's difficult for applicants to get a fair hearing, so that's why the alternates are there, to make sure there's always five members available to vote.
Okay, yes.
I, I'd like to put the names, um, Cody DeSalvo.
Okay.
Daniel Summers, and if I could just note, uh, Mr. Mark Murphy, he has history of being on a, a ZBOA board as well, uh, from his previous residence.
In another city, okay.
That, I thought that was fantastic.
Uh, always good to have. Uh, to have some experience, and, um, I'd like to put the name of Maddie Roberts in. And what I would like to suggest is for the two members, that the two that are willing to re-up are members. If all four of these get on, and then the other two newbies will draw straws to see who's alternate one and alternate two, does that sound okay?
That seems fair.
So we have four for four?
Yeah.
And we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, so we're bringing back senior citizen and some vacancies on economic development.
And the airport.
And what?
And the airport.
Well, yeah. All right, so those will be on our next agenda, um, I suspect that there'll be some folks who are on the board or know people on the board who will be out recommending people to be on the boards that we need, that we're short people.
Did we mention, sorry, Mayor, uh, did we mention the Human Services Advisory Board?
Oh, 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 thank you, thank you, I even ran it up, missed it, okay, Human Services.
Okay.
So, uh, we don't have.
I haven't gotten a response yet either, so.
So, I, she actually called me, and she said, yeah, she'd be interested.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I think she was worried about overcommitting herself, but since she didn't make whatever other one she applied for, she said she'd be interested to be on this one.
Okay, but that's another one that we don't have an application in front of us.
I mean, we have Alyssa's application.
But, I mean, we don't have it for this, but we do have an application in.
That says stuff about her.
For the, uh, ethics.
Yeah, I know, but we, but we weren't doing the others for senior citizens, because we didn't, I'm okay with it.
If, if they filled out the apps, uh.
And I feel like her application was sort of broad, anyway, like, it shows really just a desire for civic service.
I would want to do Alyssa's, if you can, it's the other child, just to, Alyssa's really had apps on her application, but.
Okay, so we're doing, what's this one again?
So we're adding.
Because she would bring us to five.
Alyssa Ramirez, oh, but remember, the five is not five, it's four plus the social worker.
The social worker, social.
So that means of the names here, one of them will not make it, if, if Ms. Ramirez, uh, is placed on there.
Her background's not a social worker, no, it's all right.
No. We have two people who are wanting reappointment, who are eligible, and then we have two other people who have applied. And I don't remember... Are they... Do you live in the city limits, okay, yes. Yes. Oh, okay, no, I'm good with this one. And... Okay.
I can't even remember when Pam got on there. Oh, because Mariana stepped down, right, and then we had to put in Pam.
I don't remember who did.
I thought Mariana was still on there.
On what?
We're talking about Human Services?
Yeah, the people that are still on there are Clayton Carlisle, Sharif Cassis, and Lucy Johnson.
But who was the social worker before?
Apparently.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, so, the name of, this is government, I gotta get my paperwork done, you know. Human Services, okay, so now we need the names. Let's start putting in some names, folks.
Um, Yancy, Linda, uh, Alyssa, and Gloria.
That was one I was gonna put in. Well, we have four for four without him. What do you mean?
So, Ethan...
He's, he's not on now.
He wasn't one of the four that we chose originally?
Unless you name him.
Well, we, we, Kings Xed what we did before, we're starting over with Human Services.
Oh, okay, starting brand new with the vote.
Because we have another person, too.
So, then how, hold on, we need...
The names of Gloria Quinn, Yancy Ervalo, Linda, I think it's Harper Williams, uh, and Alyssa Ramirez is four for four. And we still have the social worker open.
I'm gonna throw in there Ethan, just because he applied on this, he went as the first board. And that's only for, in my opinion, for me.
Okay, well, well, you can, you can certainly put his name back in. Uh, yeah, my concern is he's only been here a year and two months.
Yes, ma'am, I, I just thought...
That's okay.
The young lady was a social worker.
Huh? We still don't have the social worker.
Yeah, we don't.
Okay, right now, we have five nominees for four positions. Are there any other nominees, nominees, nominations? If not, Ms. Trevino, just go around the table. Uh, you can give four names, uh, first names, in the order in which they are. And, uh, Alyssa Ramirez is, is at the bottom of the list, not that she's at the bottom of the list, but she's the newest one listed, so, she's the last one.
All right, I'm gonna start with, uh, Ms. Rodriguez.
Uh, Yancy, I'm sorry, Gloria, Yancy, Linda, and Alyssa.
Um, Mr. Sol Gonzalez.
I'd like to go with the same one, said, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez, uh, suggested.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Garza.
I'll do Gloria, Yancy, Linda, Alyssa.
Thank you, Mayor Houston.
Gloria, Yancy, Linda, and Alyssa.
Okay, um, Mr. Scott.
Um, same thing, Gloria, Yancy, Linda, Alyssa.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mendoza.
Gloria, Ethan, Yancy, and Linda.
Okay, uh, Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Gloria, Yancy, Linda, and Alyssa.
Okay, um, so it is Gloria, Yancy, Linda, and Alyssa.
Now, are we done? Do we have this anymore? All right, so, EDSM, Airport, and Senior Citizens will be coming back.
Yes.
And we will all try to help recruit. I think y'all did such a good job with that, amplifying it, yeah.
Thank you.
I saw, I kept seeing it.
On some of these, there's some, like, the one lady we were talking about was really impressive. So, maybe if you think that they can fill one of these other slots?
Yeah, especially because she expressed, like, real deep interest to, to get started civically, so...
All righty.
Thank you, Liz, and everybody, my staff, everything. We got the best staff in all of Texas and the nation.
I would say the world, but that's just me.
I do need assistance with Neighborhood Commission Sectors Three and Nine, I could provide, um, the sector map. You want to know what areas are in, so I'll send that over.
So, that one, so two of those have to come back, so all those will be on the next agenda. So, start hustling, people.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, we are now to item...
Lucia.
Hello.
No, it was me.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
So angelic.
My voice came from somewhere.
Um, would, would the Mayor and, and Council possibly entertain a motion to reconsider the flock cameras? Not for, to, to consider the, that was item six, not to consider the postponement, but to talk about the direction, because I want to make sure that we're on the same page and that we have clarification.
I'll make a motion to reconsider item six?
Item six.
I had it in my head, it was seven, okay, six, I'll make that motion to reconsider her request from our city manager. That just puts it back on the table, doesn't mean yea or nay, just puts it back on the table. I'm waiting on, I'm hoping to get a second. Yes, for discussion purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The only reason that I'm asking for this, not for y'all to revisit your vote at all, that's, I respect what the Council's saying. But what my concern is, is just that the way the direction stayed with us was that the Council would be co-authoring the policy, and it's an operational policy of the police chief. And I don't want to negate that authority, because that creates a dangerous precedent for us going forward. Because any council, it's not just this body, but any council could come in and co-author policy that's of an operational matter. So, all I wanted to ask is if it would be possible for your consideration, um, if we could get clarification, so that if we can propose language, it's an operational policy, and still have the work session where y'all can give us guidance about that, that language, and make sure that it's meeting the spirit of what the Council's wanting with your strategic plan, um, since that has not been adopted yet. But I just want to make sure that, that it's meeting the spirit of it, um, but that the authority remains with the police chief to write his own operational policies. That's, that's all I was wanting to get clarification on.
So, I had a question about that, because what we mentioned at visioning, and so I guess what's, will become part of the, the strategic plan, was essentially a policy on technology, citywide, not specific. So, let's say the chief doesn't change his policy, but then we adopt this in our strategic plan, wouldn't that force him to change his policy to meet the requirements of the strategic plan?
So, what the, what the strategic plan talked about was just, it was in relation to public safety, really, more. We just didn't want it to look, because it said about, um, respecting personal, uh, privacy rights. And so, my concern was just making sure I didn't, you know, go to other areas of operation.
Right.
Uh, and y'all got there, and, and I appreciated the discussion. So, this, yes, if, if the Council, obviously, you're not gonna approve an expenditure of something that you don't feel we have the, the appropriate policy for on the staff level. So, it's just a, a matter of the, the aspect of not saying that the Council is co-authoring a policy with the police chief. It's still his policy, but Council, you have to feel comfortable with the policy that's put in place. So, you can still provide direction about the policy you want to see.
My, my thought was not that it was co-authoring, but that we, as elected officials of our community, um, can have some input and influence. But the, but the way you operate remains the same, that we're, I know somebody said co-authoring, and I didn't pick up that that's necessarily what we were going to do.
No, yeah. And that, that was, that was the only place, I just wanted for clarification, because again, I don't want to create, um, I didn't want to come back and then y'all say, "Oh, this didn't meet the expectation," you know? And so, I just, I, if we're gonna be, um, make sure we're doing the right thing, I just want to be sure that we're doing your expectations and that we're, we're clear on that.
So, does that mean we're gonna be funding the...
No, not, not yet.
No, y'all are still, those, that's still postponed, like, that is not, I'm not asking that...
This is just about the direction.
What I, what I wrote down, and, and maybe this is not correct, is that we were postponing until there is a policy review by Council.
Okay, and that, and I think that's good.
Are we still good with that?
That's good, so I just, I just wanted to make sure we weren't on two different pages and then have misunderstanding.
Now, that's why I have policy reviewed by Council.
I'm not asking y'all to revisit your vote on, on the, what y'all did, that's fine.
And at any time, if there's a policy that we feel is problematic, we can certainly always talk about it, it just rarely happens.
Yes, that clarifies, that's all we needed. Thank y'all for indulging, and thanks for having the discussion, that's really all I wanted to make sure we got that clarification.
And thank you for bringing that up, so that we are all clear, because I don't want to leave anything hanging, either.
Thank y'all.
I'm fine with that, too, yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
We all good?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, then let's roll on to item fourteen?
Yes, discussion and possible direction to staff to create a new policy regarding our city council, council members' attendance on external boards.
Okay, I put this on because we have representation on, we may come up with a new term, but I'm just calling it external boards, as, uh, opposed to internal. Uh, we've got what used to be GSMP is Hayes-Cobell Economic Development Partnership, Alliance Regional Water Association, uh, CAPCOG, multiple committees, uh, that's Capital Area Council of Governments, the Capital Area Mult, Metropolitan Planning Organization, our rep on the Community Action Board, I don't know, there may be others. Uh, however, we've had council members whose attendance on one of these boards is very poor and part of a quorum issue we had recently. While other organizations may not have an attendance policy, I think we should have an attendance policy, because it doesn't look good when we have a rep on a board and they just don't show up time after time. So, I'm thinking, what should the policy be? And I'm going, you know, we have a policy on vacancies, and the code is 2.06, so, what if we just use that? So, we won't be voting on that tonight, but... It may be on the jumbotron here shortly, may not, or we could just print that and give that to y'all. All we really need to do tonight is to determine, do we want to visit this? Is this something that we want to create a policy on? I'm just gonna start there and go here, you can express an opinion, but really, we just need to know... Do we want to go for, uh, do we want to go forward on my idea? Turn your microphones on now, because I'm gonna ask each one of you, yea or nay. Yours is on.
Um, okay, uh, did we pull up the, okay, let me see. Uh, so it's three consecutive.
Oh, I mean, I can...
It, it basically mirrors the, the current ordinance for boards and commissions.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
For clarification, Mayor, you're talking about just a council policy versus an actual ordinance, or are you talking...
I think it ought to be an ordinance, but, because you know what happens with council policies? They get lost, two or three years down the road, nobody knows, nobody knows it had it. I may say, didn't we act, didn't we do something with that, then somebody's gotta look for it. I think if we have it in an ordinance of our internal, I think we should put in an ordinance regarding the external. That would be my suggestion, but I'm at the mercy of six of my colleagues.
Right, and I just wanted to make sure we have, everyone was on the same understanding of what the preference was.
So, this is just so that we can consider, like, have folks, have staff bring us back something?
Basically, it would be the current, and we just replace Board of Commission with external and council member, which includes Mayor, as the Board of Commission member. And it is three consecutive, it's an automatic resignation. Uh, and then it addresses quarterly meetings, and if you miss two in a year, well, that means you've missed half of them. And there are some others. Uh, and it does note, our policy says regular meetings, that's only regularly scheduled meetings, if they decide to have some special meetings, workshops, et cetera, that are not on the prescribed list, you can't make those, you don't get deemed, you don't get demerits for those, it's the regular meetings.
Is, um, this may be a HR question, is eight weeks, uh, after either the adoption or birth of a child, is that, like, the standard time that people have to come back?
I couldn't tell you that.
Um, so, FMLA allows for 12 weeks, Family Medical Leave Act, uh, allows for 12 weeks. Um, but there, you have to have certification from your doctor. And so, usually, from a, um, natural birth, it's usually six weeks, um, that you have, that you can, that you can use sick time. So, that's, that's a distinction. Um, you can take the full 12 weeks, because the other time is for bonding, so you can do the additional. But usually, a C-section is usually eight weeks, um, for, like, sick leave time. But then the other four weeks would be used for bonding.
Yeah.
So, um, but it's 12 weeks FMLA that you get, and you get that usually after a year of having, um, served with the organization, as long as the organization is an employer of, I think it's like a hundred or more people, is what the federal law.
This can be whatever we want, it was just my suggestion of course to start.
Yeah, I'm fine with staff crafting something, as far as whether it's a council policy and ordinance, that sounds like a future conversation.
Right.
Okay.
Question is, do we, do we want to move forward with the concept?
I'm fine with moving forward.
I, I am too, Mayor, the only question I have is, uh, and the onus is some, uh, type, would that be held against that individual, if it takes them that long? Eight weeks, or if he has to miss eight weeks, or whatever? Are, are they excused, I mean, rephrase, are they excused absences?
The, the, eh, most, the ones that I'm on, they're mostly monthly, and there are some that are quarterly.
Okay.
Uh, so, quarterly, you might not even miss one, depending, or you might miss only one. Uh, the monthly, depending on how it fell, you might miss two or three.
And the, uh...
But if you got, if you got medical, you've, I'm not looking, this is for people that just forget to go.
Right, okay, yeah, I, I, I'd like to move it forward.
Okay, you're a yes. Ms. Garza?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with, uh, staff bringing back something to contemplate.
And, starting with our existing policy?
We gotta start somewhere.
I mean, we can modify, but you gotta start somewhere, okay. I'm a yes, Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
What's so funny?
Yes.
This, we, I want this, I want this bad, I've, I've been, I'm a big stickler for these things. Yeah.
Yeah, um, it will mean a bit more work on the clerk, who may need to just ask the organization for their attendant, CAPCOG, they do one spreadsheet every month. So, you just get that one for the year, or, um, or just, some of them, I don't, I don't know if they care, but I think we should care, because it really doesn't look good for our seat to be empty month after month. But what will happen on one particular is that if, if I start missing, Sam Marcus doesn't have a seat on that board, there's like three in cities of 25 to 100,000. If I start, if I quit going, we will lose that seat, so...
It would be helpful to have the list of all of them, and then the, um...
We'll get that.
Yeah, the, how often they meet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Help me remember, Ms., uh, Ms. Trevino, I, I think I can knock that one out pretty quickly. We're all yeses?
Yep.
Something will come back?
Yeah.
Who, who's the staff member that will be, take ownership of this? What, is this yours, Ms. Trevino, Ms. Gerries?
Probably Sam.
Joint, joint project?
I'd work with Liz, but I, I'll draft it, uh, in a way that if you decide to make it an ordinance, it could be converted, but it could also be a policy. Either way, the wording will be just the same, the only thing that would change if it's an ordinance is the numbering.
Let me just back up, are y'all good with an ordinance?
Uh, I don't know ordinance or policy, yeah, I don't know.
Policies get lost.
I can't answer it until I see it.
We'll wait.
The substance will be the same either way. And it'd just be the numbering, uh, convention we use for it, depending if it's a policy or not.
All righty, then that takes us to item fifteen.
Mayor, would you like to see this back to Council?
Oh. It's kinda already written, can we bring it back to the next one? Can we, can we get that?
Sure.
Mr. Gary, is that too soon? I know that only gives you a week.
I don't, I, I don't have a preference for a time.
I think it could come back and, soon, but maybe not on an agenda that already has 30 things on it. We could be flexible about that. Does that work?
That works.
As y'all saw on the screen, it's pretty much written, and of course, Council can... As y'all saw on the screen, it's pretty much written. And of course, council can chime in and ask for edits.
It's written for us to get started looking at.
So, that's fine, Mayor, if it's, unless the agenda's so long that we want to push it.
That's the deal.
But otherwise, we can probably bring it back. We'll look at our upcoming agenda.
Next reasonable agenda. Okay. All righty, item fifteen, please.
The city council will convene an executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding the matter of Whisper Master Community LP versus City of San Marcos Clause Number 24-2917 filed in Hayes County District Court and possible settlement offer.
Okay, as we always do, we post the executive session also at our four o'clock work session. And we did that. We concluded our conversation, so we do not need to go back into executive session this evening. Let's go on to item sixteen.
Consider action by motion and provide direction to staff related to the city council's executive session deliberated under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, just as stated above.
And we did give direction to staff, and moving on. Question-and-answer session with press and public, anyone signed up? No? And I'm not seeing anyone rushing to the podium, so there being no further business on our agenda. I've got a clock set at eight twenty-four. But thank you for being willing.